Good evening and welcome. My name is Margie Gator. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County. I will be the moderator for the San Bruno City Council Candidate Forum. I'd like to thank San Bruno for helping with this forum tonight. Virtual candidate forums have some unique features, but we think we've designed a process for using the conferencing apps to give everyone a good experience and follow the league's longstanding and well-received process. There is a host timekeeper and a moderator for the candidate forum. The host tonight is Kathy Wheeler. She is responsible for managing the virtual meeting and timing responses. Video for the audience is turned off by default. The only, only video that is enabled for the candidates, the moderator is and the timekeeper. The host is, uh, we have set up the conferencing so that the audience is automatically muted. And off video, this will allow the candidates to speak without interruptions. We urge everyone to submit questions. You can do that by sending an email to questions@lwvncsmc.org. That's L W V N C S M C dot org. It's like the initials in Kathy Wheeler's window. Dot org with no space. This is the only way to submit a question to the candidates. The raised hand function on Zoom will not be used for questions in this case. All questions come to the league and we will sort the questions by subject and cover a variety of topics. The candidates have agreed that no campaign literature, including campaign promoting background photos is permitted in the meeting. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization whose purpose is to promote and an active and informed participation in government. We welcome people of all genders. We appreciate the interest and efforts of groups such as the city of San Bruno and presenting events that increase voters' knowledge about the candidates and issues. The purpose of a candidate forum is to provide an opportunity for all the candidates to be heard at one time and to be questioned by you, the voters. We hope that by bringing the candidates and voters together face to face, voters will be better informed and will make good decisions when they vote. We appreciate your interest in coming out and learning more about the candidates' audience. Tonight you will hear from the candidates for the San Bruno City Council. San Bruno recently transitioned to district elections. This means candidates are now elected by district instead of all at large. There are four candidates for one seat in District One. There are two candidates for one seat in District Four. There is one candidate for one seat for mayor. That candidate Rico Medina was invited to the forum and decided not to participate tonight. Uh, we are also, we also invited Jeffrey Tong. Um, and he, we thought he was coming, but we, he has not arrived as of yet. Uh, the ground rules for the forum are as follows. Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement. Oops, I missed, I forgot important things, sorry. The candidates by district are John Strazarino, District One. Sandy Alvarez, District One. Jeremy Sarnacki, District One. Jeffrey Tong, District One. Arros Harmon, District Four. Marty Medina, District Four. Uh, the ground rules, uh, each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement. Then we will move to the question period. Each candidate will have one minute to answer. All candidates will have an equal time to speak to the question, even if it's addressed to only one candidate. And then we'll have closing statements and each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. Again, Kathy is our timekeeper and she will be giving candidates cues when they have one minute and 30 seconds left to speak. Again, if you have questions, uh, send them to questions. That's plural questions@lwvncsmc.org. Uh, all the questions again come to the moderator and we sort them by subject so we can cover a variety of topics. We seldom have time to ask all the questions and I might rephrase or combine questions at times. And there's where you send your questions. Uh, we're going to move to opening statements Kathy saying stop screen sharing. Thank you. And candidates have drawn lots to determine their orders in which they speak. Each candidate has three minutes for an opening statement and our first candidate is John Strazarino.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start by thanking a few individuals. For starters, the League of Women Voters, Kathy and Margie. I'd also like to thank Vicki and Lupita from the city of San Bruno, as well as the city council members who met individually with me. That of course is Rico, Marty, Tom, Mike and Linda. I'd like to thank my neighbors for putting in yard signs, looking at my webpage. Like to call out my helpers who put out the door hangers, Joe, Connie, Roy and Claudia. Also, I'd like to thank my opponents for coming today, Sandy, Jeffrey, Jeremy. As well as the citizens of San Bruno. I see there's approximately 37 individuals. Okay, well, let's start out with why did I run? Well, I've been a, a resident of San Bruno since 1984 and my wife and my three children moved into the Rollingwood section. My kids went to Rollingwood School. They went to Parkside, they went to Cappuccino. Uh, I've retired about a year and a half ago and I'm running because I saw the district opening because the state of California decided that we need district elections. I am retired about 18 months, so I do have time to look into all the issues that we have. What am I doing here? I want to make things better. I've certainly learned a lot since I've started running. I can see there's a lot of money being spent on different activities. However, there's not a lot of extra money to, um, do things. So we have to look at the, um, money that's being spent, make sure it's being spent correctly. Now, since I've retired, I've become part of the San Bruno Lions, uh, worked with the San Bruno Park School District. I'm a member of the St. Roberts, um, Men's Club. I've worked with the Posey Parade, Music in the Park and also done food distribution for Second Harvest. So I'm a person who wants to be involved in the neighborhood. Now realizing also these are, shall we say midterm elections? So we're expecting a smaller than normal turnout. So for all those citizens that are watching as well as everyone, panel members and so forth, I urge you to get out and vote, read the propositions, read the statements by the candidates and make an intelligent, informed decision from there. Uh, that's, uh, all I have for an opening statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next opening statement is Aras Harmon.
Hey, I am Aras Harmon, uh, resident of the Belair neighborhood. Um, I grew up on the East Coast, moved to California after college to attend grad school at Cal, which I promptly dropped out of and went into the dot com bubble. Have, uh, bounced around the Bay Area over the years, uh, worked in various aspects of the technology industry. Um, you know, I'm, I am an engineer, uh, by temperament and profession. I like working on complex systems and trying to understand what makes them tick and how to make them better. And, uh, that's really the approach I take to public policy. Um, I don't have an ideology exactly. I am a registered Democrat and the endorsed candidate of the Democratic Party in this district. But, uh, I am always open to solutions regardless of where they come from. I have, uh, some very good conversations with people from other perspectives. Um, you know, I'm running, uh, primarily because I am concerned about our housing market, uh, in the Bay Area and in our city. I, uh, have had too many friends move away. I've seen my friends who have kids who graduated from college where they either have to live at home or move away. I've seen too many, uh, seniors priced out because they're on fixed income and, uh, and can't afford the rising cost of living. Even as a homeowner, you do pay for the high cost of our housing market because our teachers, our other public servants, you know, the folks who stock the shelves at the grocery, all of them are either paying rent here or they have to be given wages that will incentivize them to commute in from some ridiculous distance. And we in the Bay Area have more of those super commuters coming in from three plus hours away than any other region in the world. And so I think we need to take this issue seriously. It is the most important thing that local government does is the long-term planning for land use. And that's what got me into local politics, became a planning commissioner after, after just, you know, attending and giving comment. I'm now Chair of the Planning Commission and I value the trust of my fellow commissioners and try to conduct those meetings with respect for all perspectives. Um, and now I am seeking to bring this perspective to the, uh, the city council. And I hope, uh, I will receive your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jeremy, you're going to be next, but I'm going to give Jeffrey a heads up that he will be number four for opening statements and then number three for closing statements. So, uh, next in opening statements is Jeremy Sarnacki.
Hello to the League of Women Voters, uh, and to those watching this forum. Uh, whether you are a district, district one resident, a San Bruno resident, or are just a fan of good old fashioned public discourse, it is uh, my honor to speak in front of you and it is my pleasure to share with you my vision for a better San Bruno. When I first ran back in 2020, I had one goal in mind. I wanted to revitalize our democracy by bringing as many young people into the political process as possible. I felt people my age or younger uh, did not appreciate the magnitude of the election of that year. And, um, perhaps we're not going to be fully engaged in the process. And so I took it upon myself to make politics feel real. But in doing so, I also wanted to, uh, share with my fellow district one residents and people all across my city. Issues that I felt were important to me and these included defending our public schools, preserving public lands, building adequate housing and bringing local solutions to global issues. And two years later, my mission is still the same. Uh, but I have the relationships and the knowledge of the past to help inform what I can do once I'm elected to city council. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our next opening statement is Jeffrey Tong. Oh, join mute Jeffrey, come off mute. Where you get started? And you have three minutes.
Uh, good evening, um, San Bruno residents and legal women voters. Um, my background is environmental planning and policy, uh, from UC Davis, and I also have a construction management degree. Um, and a certificate in sustainable development. I was both a planner and analyst and licensed in real estate appraisals and finance. This is essentially environmental planning, uh, with a dollar sign as a, as a conclusion. In 2018, I founded Cominas Costeras, a wildlife habitat epitomized by fog and water is life. The mission of our
Well, we have a frozen areas. Nope. I think we have a frozen screen and the time will keep ticking. Kathy, you're on mute if you're saying something to me.
I will go ahead and go to the next candidate and we can come back to Jeffrey.
Yep.
And I'll, I'll note that it has two minutes and 30 seconds left.
Okay, thank you. Uh, our next opening statement is Sandy Alvarez.
Good evening. First, I'd like to say thank you to all the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. And thank you to all who are tuning in to watch us tonight and all the candidates. My name is Sandy Alvarez. I am running for District One City Council because I enjoy helping people. I believe I have the experience and understanding on how the city operates in the areas of development and infrastructure. I have a strong background in public administration, architecture and general construction. I served the city for more than eight years in the community and economic development department. The city has the opportunity for economic growth and I believe my skills and experience can help make that happen. I am passionate, I am also passionate about San Bruno because I've been living in San Bruno for over a decade. I have family and friends living in San Bruno for, also living in San Bruno. Therefore, this is a great opportunity for me to continue serving the community I love. If elected, my top priority as a council member is to improve efficiencies and how the city and how the city is run. San Bruno needs to bring in more development so we can generate funds to use for, to use on street improvements, parks and downtown. When we bring in development to the city, it creates jobs and economic growth. I believe I can make a difference and I need your vote to make it happen. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight.
Thank you. And our next opening statement is Marty Medina.
Good evening. My name is Marty Medina, current San Bruno City Council member and candidate for District Four. Thank you, San Bruno, for your votes, your trust and your support. I am deeply honored and grateful for the opportunity to represent our city. I have lived on the east side of San Bruno for 20 years. Eleven of those years as a San Bruno Public Works Inspector and the past seven years on the city council. I love helping our diverse community. I'm a proud member of both the San Bruno Lions and the San Bruno Rotary. I volunteer regularly at Belair School, the American Legion, and at the Second Harvest Food Bank Distributions. I help whenever I can with neighborhood cleanups, beautification projects and community events. I coach baseball for San Bruno Pee Wees, the Junior Giants and Fall Ball, and I squeeze in time with the scouts whenever I can. I am proud of San Bruno's leadership to guide us through the COVID-19 pandemic. I volunteered at various testing and vaccination events and packaged food for San Bruno seniors. All of this activity in our community allows me many opportunities to directly hear from our residents. This insight, insight enables me to understand what is going on in our community and how I can help. For council meetings, I do my homework, study the agenda packet, consult with the city manager, listen to all sides and ask questions. San Bruno City Council has made tremendous progress in increasing our revenues while minimizing the impact to our residents. We have renegotiated contracts with Walmart.com and Artichoke Joe's to increase revenues. We are finalizing the sale of our vacant lot next to Jack's to a Hyundai Genesis dealership, which will net over $3 million and provide an estimated $1 million in yearly additional taxes. YouTube will soon contribute over $50 million in fees for their Phase One and Phase Two expansions with approximately $10 million of that for affordable housing. Tan France redevelopment plans released last week include 1,000 units of needed housing. Our new recreation and Recreation and Aquatic Center is under construction, currently on time and budget with the opening scheduled for fall of next year. I'm a leading advocate for our downtown where numerous hardworking business owners take pride in their diverse stores that offer great products and services. Thank you, Jeanette and Max for your understanding and support. I know this takes a lot of time, but I am compelled to make San Bruno a wonderful place for us and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I see on the participant list that Jeffrey has rejoined. So Jeffrey, if you can, uh, enable your video and come off mute. We will, um, you froze at about 30 seconds in and we'll give you two minutes and 30 seconds for, to finish your opening statement.
I apologize, my computer froze up. Um, in 2018, I founded Cominas Costeras, a wildlife habitat epitomized by fog and I believe water is life. The mission of our organization is to advocate, educate and inspire residents to build community, restore and respect our native habitat and minimize our carbon footprint. Cominas Costeras translates to the coastal hills, which is San Bruno's District One, which is why I'm running. I started in 2012 as a bicycle pedestrian, um, um, advocate. And in that time, I helped pass San Bruno's Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan. And I discovered that San Bruno has many faults, or shall I say many problems, um, with its infrastructure. And I've learned that the city has financial issues. And I've, uh, been working to, uh, build community, uh, through Coastal Cleanup Day, Earth Day and other activities. And I've learned from residents what is, uh, bothering them. And I hope to, uh, bring together community, the ecology and help rebuild a green economy for San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the question phase. Um, I will vary the order in which the candidates are called on to speak. And, uh, candidates, I will repeat the questions so that the first person to answer has half a second to think about it. Um, the first question is, please tell us how your experience living in San Bruno has helped you to understand the local issues that are most important to its residents? And why do you feel you are best equipped to respond to those issues and direct improvements? So tell us how, um, about how your experience living in San Bruno has helped you to understand the local issues that are important? And why do you feel you are best equipped to respond to those issues and direct improvements? And first is Aras Harmon.
So, uh, in the course of, of going around canvassing, uh, in our neighborhoods, um, one of the issues that I have been discussing that I would like to work on and prioritize is, uh, expediting the permitting process for home improvement, home renovation. Um, and this is an issue I've been interested in for years. Um, you know, regardless of my own experiences, but, uh, but I will say I, I have some experience in this area with, with major renovations to my own home. Um, you know, like our, our current requirement is that if the residential floor space in your home is above 55% of the size of the lot, you're subject to an extended discretionary process with, uh, with quite a bit of fees and delays. Um, and I would like to see it easier that if people are just trying to adapt their home to take care of their family out of room. You know, and I, I have definitely heard from a lot of, uh, residents that they have similar experiences. Um, I think my depth of experience in, in researching public policy, reading white papers, um, will set me up well to pursue this issue.
Thank you. And next is John Strazarino. You're on mute, John. And we'll start the timer when you get back with us. There you go.
Thank you. Um, living in San Bruno for more than 30 years, I've seen a lot of changes. Some are good and some are bad. One of the issues that really gets me right now is maintenance. Uh, potholes are everywhere, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done and a lot of revenue that needs to be added. Now, I'm a retired individual, so I will have the time to spend, as Marty mentioned earlier, about reading over the, um, issues that come across and making a decision, not just a decision for District One, but a decision for the all of San Bruno. Want to make sure that whatever my decisions are will affect everyone, not just those of us who happen to live in Rollingwood or Crestmore or in the avenues. So I will make it a point to look and talk and discuss all of the issues, including the financial portions that come in front of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sandy Alvarez.
Living in San Bruno, in my opinion, uh, what the city is lacking is efficiencies. And I had the privilege to, uh, work at the, um, in, in the Economic and Development Department in the Building, uh, Division. And I, um, my, my experience, I believe, uh, will give me the, um, the skills or the upper hand to work more efficiently and more effectively, not only in my district, but across the city. So, um, the efficiency needs to be improved and my experience will basically, um, help me to work more, more effectively.
Thank you. And next is Jeffrey Tong.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Is, am I muted? Okay, great. Um, I believe given that I've worked in the, uh, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee for about half a decade, I believe transportation is critical because it's, uh, it affects housing. Uh, people in the Portola Highlands, Pacific Heights area, they like the quietness, uh, but they have trouble getting out. They don't like the roads. They only have three portals to get in and out. And, uh, the problem is they have invested in their cars and they expect the city to invest in the roads or the streets. And, uh, they see the problem as the city's responsibility. The problem is the city has insufficient funds to, uh, to fix those roads. And, uh, they, the, the residents also believe that the taxes should pay for it. So there's a, a, a communication gap between residents in cities. Thank you.
And next is Jeremy Sarnacki.
So growing up in San Bruno, uh, I am a product of San Bruno's public schools all the way from, uh, first grade, Rollingwood Elementary School, all the way to Skyline Community College. And, uh, what I see is a troubling pattern, uh, a school board that in the past has, uh, not valued the, um, what the importance of a public school system means to a city, whether that's, uh, the draw it brings to prospective families into our city, which I believe needs to be, um, considered. Uh, while we are, um, all focused on city council, I think, um, a partnership, a better partnership with, uh, our San Bruno Park School District is needed. Uh, there are areas of overlap that we should focus on so we can preserve our residents' access to open space. And when I see, um, just monumental changes taking place across our city, uh, the transformation of Tan Fran into a biotech housing hub.
Thank you. Um, and next is Marty Medina.
Yes, thank you. Um, I moved to San Bruno 20 years ago. I have the unique experience of firsthand knowledge as working as a public works inspector, seeing firsthand how we didn't have enough resources to maintain our infrastructure, whether it's our streets, our water systems, our sewer systems, our storm drain systems. As a, as, as a councilman, I'm, I voted in favor of moving forward with the comprehensive sustainability project, which provides those funds to provide the things that we need and want. This funding comes from a variety of sources. Um, one of, one of the largest that we're going to start seeing, um, these revenues coming in is by improving, approving the development impact fees. We also went to our residents, asked them to vote in favor of raising the sales tax a half cents, a half cent. With these funds, we are now looking at spending close to $6 million this fiscal year.
Thank you.
To improve our roads.
Thank you. Uh, just a reminder, candidates, be sure to be in gallery view so you can see the timing cue cards. Uh, our next question is, as a council person, how will you help mitigate the rising cost of living? And/or the displacement of our citizens who are not wealthy tech workers? And if you are on the council, how will you help mitigate the rising cost of living and/or the displacement of our citizens who are not wealthy tech workers? And for this, we start with Jeffrey Tong.
Thank you. Mitigate high cost of living. It is really difficult to to bridge the gap between income and expense. Grocery is going up double or triple. Housing costs are astronomical. Um, what can a city council member do? Um, for those under $50,000 income, it's extremely difficult to increase, let's say zero, because the more you make, the more your increase or percentage of your, uh, income is. I would probably say collab, uh, cooperatives, help, uh, people get new training for new jobs, perhaps at Skyline College and, uh, partner that with, uh, Bay Area Entrepreneurial Center. Uh, do you help mentor them as a group?
Thank you. Thank you. And next is Aras Harmon.
The original sin of the Bay Area. The original sin of the Bay Area is that we got the tech industry. And we drove its development, and that's been fantastic for our economy, and we never built any more homes for anyone. You know, if you look at what's happened in San Mateo County in the last decade, we have added ten jobs for every one new home that's added. And I am deeply concerned about the released plans for the Tanfran development. The original Tanfran land use vision document was listing it as one thousand apartments with. One million square feet of biotech offices. It is hard to say exactly how many jobs that is. But it would be on the order of two thousand to eight thousand, four thousand to five thousand is a pretty good guess. That number has now doubled. So we're talking about something like ten thousand jobs. When our projected housing growth over the next eight years is like thirty-six to thirty-seven hundred units, this single project. There's too many people being drawn into the community for our housing growth. And I would say, oh, where are they going to live? But I know where they're going to live. They're going to live in the homes of the people they displaced.
Thank you. Next is Marty Medina.
Yes, thank you. This is a very, very difficult question to answer and. And because we live in such an incredibly expensive area. The smallest homes in San Bruno are now a million dollars. The city has limited resources to assist our most vulnerable residents. We do offer lower cost for water, sewer, and internet. But that's not going to put food on the table. We can increase, and we are working to increase our housing supply. But that's still not going to solve the problem. So it's one of those things where the solution. Really comes back to how do these residents obtain more skills to get a better job? Someone making minimum wage is not going to thrive in San Bruno, and that's really too bad. I'm sorry.
And next is Jeremy Sernicki.
Okay, so how do we mitigate the high cost of living in San Bruno in the Bay Area? Obviously. Housing cost is a huge proportion of someone's earned income. And I think San Bruno could partner with the San Bruno Park School District to perhaps develop some. Staff housing. This would just help mitigate the pinch that's felt by its city workers, bring more talent into our city. Also, we have to really look at how we can prevent rate increases. We have aging infrastructure that is currently unfunded. And we have to look at how we can use our community benefit and our development impact fees in a smart, responsible way. So that they go to fixing the infrastructure and it's not put on to the rate there.
Thank you. And next is John Strazzerino.
Thank you very much. I think we really need to look at the city of Millbrae. A friend of mine is moving into some housing that's below market cost based upon her income. And this particular individual is getting ready to move in. Now, I understand at El Camino and San Bruno Avenue where the old AT&T building was, they're talking about senior housing. And that might be one way to help mitigate the ridiculous pricing for houses. You know, it's very much out of alignment and along with inflation that we currently having and gasoline prices and so forth. It's very difficult. Even younger people are staying at home, living with their parents, even though they may be thirty years old, possibly have a spouse and children. So it's a very big issue. I think we need to look a little bit at Millbrae, what they're doing, see if we could do that in San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Sandy Alvarez.
Thank you. As a council member, this will be a very challenging issue to mitigate. But I will work diligently with my colleagues. I will vote as much as possible to keep our fees steady and not increase them. We need to keep our employees, so I will vote for no layoffs. And also, I will vote to support affordable housing. Thank you.
Okay. Next question is, how will you support economic development of San Bruno in general? And specifically, how would you help attract new businesses to San Mateo Avenue? So how would you help support, or what are your thoughts on economic development in San Bruno? And specifically, how would you attract new businesses to San Mateo Avenue? And first is Marty Medina.
Okay, excellent. The city council approved a position of an economic development manager to actually do that work. The problem that we experienced is that we're having a hard time to hire that person. Because it's so expensive to live here and the salary that we offer. Doesn't really cut it for somebody to come here and live here. But nonetheless, what this council has done and what I've been an advocate for is. I started with council support, the Downtown Improvement Committee. Our council has approved, making sure that our sidewalks are cleaner. Making sure that we have new nicer garbage cans. We are spending close to nine hundred thousand dollars in improving the. Centennial Plaza that is currently just roped off. There are new businesses.
Thank you. Next is Jeffrey Tong.
How do I support economic development? And how do I support San Mateo Avenue? The problem with San Mateo Avenue is the parking is in the rear, and that's also where the garbage is. I believe San Bruno or San Mateo Avenue need to reverse its downtown and put the front. Behind the shopping area so that those who drive there can see the entrance from Mastic. And other areas. I believe that we should create a website. Given that San Bruno no longer has a functional chamber and has no tourist bureau. And we should use SFO, the airport, as our primary draw. And complement their website. And that's why I purchased one called daytripSFO.com.
Thank you. And next is John Strazzerino.
Thank you for your time. I understand San Mateo Avenue has some issues and we're working along. Thank you, Marty, for the information that you gave us regarding getting development and streets cleaned and garbage cans and so forth. We definitely need to concentrate on that. Also, in terms of economic development, there's a lot of projects that are waiting to happen in San Bruno. Like the Mills Park one, where Melody Toyota is, so forth and so on. And I think we need to go back to the developers and say, okay, what can we do? Let's find a common ground. We may get a few less dollars for this, or may have to add a grocery store where we didn't think it was necessary. But there's a lot of things we need to speak with our developer partners to see what we can do to get the city moving in the correct direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Sandy Alvarez.
Thank you. As I mentioned in my opening statement, the city need development. We can use the revenue from the development, bringing in the development to the city. We can use the development impact fee to fund some of the issues that we are seeing in the downtown area. There is grants out there. I will work diligently with the staff to find the grants that we can help support the small businesses. So that they can share, at least, or maybe offer some loan so they can share the cost instead of, you know. Pulling the money from our revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Aras Harmon.
So. I want to be clear, I'm not necessarily averse to development. I just think it needs to be balanced between jobs and housing. And development will bring in revenue over time that can be reinvested. I think we should have a clear plan, a capital budget. Towards saving up enough that we can build a city-operated parking structure to replace one of the current surface lots. Which would allow us to free up the other surface lots for more productive uses, public parks. You know, a farmer's market, other things that attract people. And I, part of that, I actually agree with Jeff, that the situation with the garbage being directly adjacent to sort of how people access the space. Is quite unpleasant, and we should be looking at figuring out how to manage the garbage more effectively. In a way that does not leave you smelling it when you come to visit.
Thank you. And finally, Jeremy Sernicki.
So I think San Bruno can be a very vibrant city if it chooses to be. I think we're going to have a lot of development that's going to bring. Ample foot traffic into our downtown, our economic nexus. But if I'm elected to San Bruno City Council District One, I will be putting my focus into uptown as much as possible and not into downtown. I think that foot traffic is going to come. I think the development, as much as we would like to say we can stop it, is going to be coming. We have projects, the Mills project aside, we're going to have those a thousand housing units and come along Tanfran and the loss of those. The food court as well. So we're going to have ample demand for economic activity in our downtown. And I think we can only do better by leveraging the community foundation like we've had in the past. To upgrade our Centennial Plaza, one that our residents deserve.
Thank you. Our next question is kind of about streets as well. This citizen believes there is an issue with cabs, Lyft, Uber, and town cars parking in the avenues. How do you propose addressing this problem? The citizen thinks, believes there's an issue with cabs, lifts, Ubers, town cars, parking in the avenues. How do you propose addressing this problem? And first is John Strazzerino. Come off mute. There.
Thank you very much. Yes, I understand there is a problem with Uber and Lyft and so forth. And of course, our proximity to SFO, that's where they hang out, waiting for, you know, the next ride. Probably we should put in some street restrictions in San Francisco. They have the little stickers you put on your car that say, I can park in section A. I can park in section B. And hopefully that will discourage people from, you know, congregating in San Bruno. On the avenues where parking is very tight. So I, you know, recommend some sort of a permit system, not necessarily to raise money, but to free up the parking. So that the residents can leave their vehicles in front of their house instead of way down the street. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Jeremy Sernicki.
Yeah, I really don't think there's any perfect answers to the parking situation. It's always going to be a dilemma. And I think the permitting is really the only solution there is. I don't know how it came about, but. If San Bruno could get some of that parking that Artichoke Jones currently owns by Caltrain, that would do a lot. Because I don't really see us building any parking structures in the near future.
Thank you. Next is Jeffrey Tong.
I believe the city's permit process is fair and equitable. Every neighborhood needs to have, what, fifty percent plus one neighbors to sign a petition? For permit parking in their subdivision. Yeah, outside of that, considering the controversy. The voluntary permitting petition is probably the best way to go. I agree with the city's policy.
Thank you. Next is Marty Medina.
Yes, the parking problems in the avenues and actually in other parts of our city is really, really difficult. I can say that I was the council member that started the effort to have a parking permit program. However, what we're finding out is that parking permit program is too cumbersome. The council has already discussed an interest in revising the parking permit program. It isn't just the Ubers and the Limos and those vehicles. It's also people that leave their cars that go to the airport. There's also a number of auto repair businesses that take up a lot of the parking. So with our current parking permit program being too cumbersome, we need to look at. And I work with Tom Hamilton on this parking permit program. We need to go back and tweak it so that it's easier. And it does cost money to enforce parking, parking permit program. So I would be in favor of doing that.
Thank you. Next is Sandy Alvarez.
I think we have a municipal code that allows visitors to park in the street for certain amount of days. I think we need to strategize between science and educating the residents. That if they see a car parked on the street for more than certain amount of days to be proactive. In my opinion, I think we could also create a hotline so that they can report it. And we can strategize between calling the hotline, sending our police to. Issue them a ticket. So I think that's the ultimatum because when a driver receives a ticket, then, you know. I don't think they will be parking back. So I think that we just need to be proactive and strategize our two systems that we can develop. You know, hotline or ticket, giving them ticket.
Thank you. And finally, Aras Harmon.
So I just want to observe as a factual matter, we already negotiated with Lyft and Uber to prevent people from being able to be called to the airport. Unless they wait in the appropriate lot. The issue is more now with the folks who park their car and call Lyft to the airport. That remains a problem. And then just the auto businesses and just the fact that our dwellings are overcrowded. Relative to what they were intended for, and they have, people have taken up their garages with stuff. I've seen a very interesting proposal for a version of parking permitting. Where you take seriously the idea that a resident has a right to the curb in front of their home, which everybody kind of feels that it isn't the legal truth. Legally, it's public property. But I've seen a permit concept where you essentially every year with your January utility bill. You got a code that lets you claim, you know, essentially permits on the number of spaces that's equivalent to the curb in front of your residence. And then those permits become tradable. So if you don't need them all, you can sell them to a neighbor, you can sell them back to the city. And then the city can rent them out through an app like SpotHero or Pay by Phone. I think a version of a parking permit program that was not a new charge, but rather giving an asset to the resident might be more popular.
Thank you. Our next question is about the city's partnership with schools and the school district. This resident or questioner says, the partnership between city and the school district is critical. Please describe your efforts with the schools before your candidacy and what you will do if you're elected to build the partnership with schools. So the partnership between city and the school district is critical. Describe your efforts with the schools before you became a candidate. And what you will do to build it when you are a candidate. And we will start with Jeremy Sernicki.
So this is an issue that got me involved in politics in the first place. I felt very strongly about the closure of Rollingwood Elementary School. And I have made it a point of my twenty-twenty campaign in twenty-twenty-two to make sure that Rollingwood is never sold. And I've tried to be as active as possible in this space to find out the clear answer, what is the future of this property? And I attended a San Bruno Park School District Board meeting yesterday where I found out that the direction it's going to is to be leased as a preschool. And I believe this is going to help the residents because we definitely need to plan for adequate. Needs when we see so much growth on the horizon for Tanfran and all these developments taking place. We just need to have that partnership. So we're on the same page. What are the future growth trends for our city? And to protect the public properties that belong to all our residents.
Thank you. Next is Sandy Alvarez.
I have never been to any of the school district board meeting. And if elected, that would be my mission to start observing and watching. Basically to build a relationship with the school district. I know that we already have that relationship. When we issue a permit, we actually pay a certain amount of school district fees. From the remodeling and also from any development, anytime they reach the limit. And so we already have that relationship with the school district. And I want to further that if elected and see what I can, and we'll see what I can help. And maybe this school district can return, you know, the information of what they can also offer to the city. And, and maybe this school district can return, you know, the, the information of what they can also offer to the city.
Thank you. Next is Aras Harmon.
So I have attended several meetings of the San Bruno Park School District in relation to land use issues and, and some of the unionization issues, you know, project labor agreements. And I am endorsed by one of the former presidents of the Board of Trustees. And I talk with her regularly, Terry Chavez. And she will be transitioning from San Bruno Park to the High School District, I believe. Look, I, I think the biggest thing that the city council can do for the school district is simply make sure that we have property taxes coming in, which fund the school district. And then finding ways that we can produce more affordable housing because the imbalance between our school district having, you know, I mean, teacher pay in California is low generally. And San Bruno Park is low relative to the, the background of other, other school districts in the area. And so trying to retain teachers in this market, we really need to look at what Daly City and Redwood City have done with getting dedicated staff and teacher housing.
Thank you. Next is John Strazarino.
Thank you. There is definitely a, a bit of a division I've seen between San Bruno Park School District and the city council. We don't have direct control, to my understanding, over their budget and so forth. But I also agree with Aros and Sandy about we need to sit down, see what we can do to make things better. You know, Rollingwood School is just down the street from me and it's unfortunate that it's closing. But as Aras says, it sounds like there may be a preschool coming in. So that's good. And you know, there's also talk about Angwell being sold. I believe it was recently sold and becoming housing down there. Also, Skyline College, I just came to find out today from Marty that they have approved some housing for teachers and for staff at Skyline. So that's really a good step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Marty Medina.
Yes, thank you. I believe in building partnerships with our schools. I serve on the Two by Two Committee. We worked on a joint use agreement that finally got updated. But, but we didn't get into any details on how we could expand effort for cost savings of, of perhaps finding ways that we can share staff for, like the, the mechanics or, or being able to do janitorial services or cutting the lawn, finding ways to do that. I currently serve as the Chair of the San Bruno Lion Ambassador Program where the Lions go into each school and we find out from the principals what they want. And we work with the limited budget in, in getting the principal minor projects that they need. I was at Skyline today. I think it's a fantastic idea to, to develop housing on school property for, for the school staff. And I'm definitely in favor of higher pay for teachers.
Thank you. And finally, Jeffrey Tong.
I believe that school districts are very much like water boards and mosquito boards and even neighboring cities. Our cities tend to have rather poor relationship with neighboring cities and, and not even sure what the relationship between all the boards are. I believe the school district is pretty much a land use issue. And the city should develop those relationships for, number one, I, I hope to have the first option of first refusal if the school district does decide to sell the property.
Thank you. Our next question is, what is your stance on cannabis dispensaries in San Bruno? What is your stance on cannabis dispensaries in San Bruno? Couple, got a couple of questions about that. Just FYI, and we will start with Sandy Alvarez.
My stance on the dispensary of the cannabis is, I, I oppose, however, I would like to leave it open because if there are some developing issues or basically some, some good, you know, return to keep the, the cannabis, then I will, I will listen and, and work with, with my constituents and, and, and my colleague. So ultimately, I, I will be open for, and listen to the, the residents, to the community. And if the people say, if the residents say they want the, the dispensary or the cannabis, then I will, will vote for the cannabis. But for now, I, I wanna get all my, my facts and all my research put in place first.
Thank you. And next is Marty Medina.
Yes, I voted in favor of allowing cannabis dispensaries in San Bruno. When you think about it, cannabis is already here. It's being consumed by your neighbors. It's up and down the street. But it's also important to keep the facts on cannabis dispensaries in place. I have a, I have a ten-year-old son. I don't, I don't want him smoking cannabis. And, and the truth is, he will likely never step into a dispensary until he's old enough. He will never get cannabis from a dispensary because it's easier to get it off the street. It costs more at a dispensary. And if we're gonna go ahead and try to scare people, it's effective, but the truth is cannabis, cannabis dispensaries will provide a revenue stream for San Bruno.
Thank you. And next is Jeremy Sernicki.
Yeah, well, here I go. I'm about to lose a whole bunch of votes. But yeah, I, I have already made my thoughts perfectly clear on this issue. I am supportive of it. I think anyone who knows about the dire need for infrastructure improvements and the lack of funding would be in support of it. And I think the residents have already spoken by an overwhelming margin that they would like to see a dispensary in San Bruno. I think too much time's already been spent on this issue. And I think we have more important issues to look forward to. We should be looking at this issue on the positive sides that I can bring to San Bruno. Fixing our streets, fixing our street lamps, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Aras Harmon.
So I, I am in favor. I don't think the volume of revenue from it is gonna be a silver bullet. You know, there's, there's never a silver bullet. It's always silver buckshot. It, it will be a non-trivial part of, of improving our budget. And I, I'm fully in alignment with Marty on this, that, that, you know, this type of business, we've seen it in other places. A, a well-regulated dispensary is, you know, it's opaque. It is guarded. You know, kids aren't going in there. People aren't allowed to loiter outside and smoke, you know. It, and in terms of the impact on the community, the, you know, body of evidence, I'm persuaded it is, if anything, less harmful than alcohol. And we permit plenty of liquor stores. So I just, I don't, I don't see that, you know, we, we had a vote. We voted to, to license tax and, and, and we should, we should pass a law to, to cite them. You know, with appropriate distances, but you know, the, the version of the ordinance that, that was sent up, you know, included those, you know, appropriate distance from youth facilities. And I think it should have passed.
Thank you. And next is Jeffrey Tong.
I can support it. I'm in agreement with Marty, Aros and Jeremy. Some people oppose it claiming that they voted for a tax if it were to pass, but they, they, they claim they oppose it. The issue is that this is not a, this was not a survey. This was an election. And when you have an election ballot issue, it's to allow the city council to make decisions based upon the people's vote. If you're looking at an addiction, we have coffee, cigarettes, alcohol and other things. And the chief of police said that this is not a crime issue if it's monitored correctly. We also had a history of gambling, Tan Fran Racehorses, gambling saloons, even Artichoke Jones. But those are okay, but cannabis, no. There's, there's conflicting interests here. And people should really tell us what their real concerns are. So I, I don't think there's an issue with cannabis being a problem.
Thank you. And finally, John Strazarino.
Thank you. As everyone has said, everyone seems to be in favor of cannabis. It is somewhat of a double-edged sword. At one hand, it's able to get additional tax revenue into San Bruno. One of my neighbors goes to Pacifica to get her CBD products. And this particular individual would obviously just go down to San Mateo Avenue or somewhere. So it is definitely a hot political issue on both sides of the sword. I would say that I'd be in favor, along with pretty much everyone who's spoken so far in front of me. It definitely needs to be regulated and make sure that the, the proprietors follow each and every rule, just like a gun store or liquor store. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's everybody. Okay, next question. Areas of San Bruno, there are areas of San Bruno that need attention regarding cleanliness. How will you address these areas? Some of them belong to organizations like BART. How will you work with them to keep their areas clean? So generally, cleanliness, particularly messiness where there's other organizations that are contributing to it potentially or just bring lots of people. Like BART, how will you work with them to keep areas clean and how will you work in general to keep San Bruno clean? And we will start with Aras Harmon.
All right, my audio fuzzed out there a moment. Can you repeat the question?
Sure. It's about cleanliness in San Bruno. How will you address issues regarding cleanliness in San Bruno? There are areas that belong to other organizations like BART. How will you work with them to keep areas clean?
Yeah, I mean, I like, thinking of an example, to the east of the Hardin Lamita Park, we have this area where the ownership is split among Caltrain and Caltrans and Bard and PG&E. And there's, there's a lot of complexity to that. And it is a, it is a legitimately difficult problem. I think we need to allocate the staff hours to, you know, have a staffer, a lawyer, focus on negotiating with the various parties to say like, you know, these areas have to be cleaned up. I'm interested in more traffic cameras, which can double as surveillance to catch people's license plates for things like illegal dumping. So that way we can, you know, both catch people and find them and, and create a disincentive for dumping things in our city. But in terms of cleanup of stuff that's already there, we just really need to have the staff time and the relationships among council members and the electeds of some of these other bodies to, to broker a deal.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is John Strazarino.
Thank you. Yeah, this is definitely an issue. I understand we just have a new street sweeper truck. I've seen pictures of it on Facebook. And I think if we could get it to more areas in San Bruno, that would be a, a great deal. Yeah, we do have a problem with people dumping stuff under, like under three eighty and just there's a couch on the corner for an apparent reason. So as Arrow said, I think we need to make sure that these people get fined through cameras and so forth. And I also appreciate what Marty and the council members have done to get new garbage cans on San Mateo Avenue. And there's also, I believe, a street cleaning where they power wash the sidewalks. And I think those are great starts for this issue that is just part of life that we need to get around. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Sandy Alvarez. Sandy, I'm mute. Come back, come back. And we'll restart your time. There you go.
Thank you. Sorry about that. We need to, I think we need to stabilize our departments who manages that particular issues like code enforcement and public works department. And we need, we need to make sure that we are making the most of their time to fulfill all these issues and work with the, the, all the departments or, or Bard, for example, who's in charge on, on cleaning their area. So we need to work side by side with the Bard and, and, and also police, PD and, and Public Works and Code Enforcement. Thank you.
Okay, next is Jeffrey Tong.
I think we lost Jeffrey.
We lost Jeffrey. Okay. Next is Jeremy Sernicki.
So I can take this question two ways. One is, you know, we do have agencies that are somewhat irresponsible in how they leave their equipment now. I've seen that before in Huntington. And I think we just need to stay on top of them to make sure that they're following the laws. But secondly, I am well aware of the fact that the furious anger that district residents in the lower part of San Bruno have over the illegal dumping and the, what they see is the irresponsiveness of the council and the city in general. I think we need to really take that to heart. And if we have to do more police patrols, I think that might be what it takes.
Thank you. And next is Marty Medina.
Yes, this is, this is a problem. This is a problem about enforcement. This is a problem with people who don't care, come into our neighborhoods and dump their stuff. The council has worked with recology to, to, to improve efficiencies, to have recology pick up the, the dump, the, the trash that is dumped on public property. It is, it is, it would be my intent that we would try to work with these agencies and hold them accountable. However, we also have to hold the people who are doing it accountable. And technology would be on our side of improving the lighting in these areas, improving cameras in these areas and actually starting to enforce it. So I've, I have contacted Bard in the past directly and, and got some, some areas cleaned up. But it doesn't happen quick enough. And the city doesn't have, have the staff to do it by ourselves.
Thank you. Jeffrey, I see you back on the participant list. Are you able to get on video or voice to answer cleanliness question? Okay, there he is.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure, it's about cleanliness in San Bruno. What will you do to help keep San Bruno clean in general? And how will you work with organizations like BART where there can be problems with cleanliness?
Part of my political campaign is to improve ecology, economy and community. This is a respect issue in which, like Marty says, people come into the city, they don't respect our property, our, uh, public property. Up in the Skyline College area, they've been using public property like College Drive to dump sofas. And I believe this issue is a community-wide issue. If people use San Bruno as a, a bedroom community, they don't really live here. We really need to build the community and to have neighbors watch out for what's being dumped here. We do have neighbors with security cameras and those, those can be of help. The police chief has said that voluntary, we could use, ask neighbors to use their cameras if possible.
Thank you. The next question, a couple of people asked is, are you accepting Sam Carr's endorsement? Why or why not? Are you accepting Sam Carr's endorsement? Why or why not? And as it happens, Jeffrey, you are first on this.
I am not accepted or even asked Sam Carr for their endorsement. Real estate is a touchy issue. I do have a real estate license that's expired, but that's for gaining the technical expertise in real estate, understanding how it works. But I'm an environmental planner and that's where my heart is. It's tricky to get endorsements in a sense that when organizations such as this advocate for you, it is almost like you're promoting development. Development's got pluses and minuses, but I believe with my background as an environmental planner and as one licensed in a real estate, that I understand both sides. And I can be a good third-party negotiator.
Thank you. Next is Aras Harmon.
So I am endorsed by Sam Carr. I went back and forth on whether to bother to submit a questionnaire to them because I honestly disagree with them on quite a few issues. But as it happened, the day before the period to fill out their questionnaire expired, a, a real estate agent happened to be working on selling a house on the other side of my street. And a very nice conversation with her. We, we had a lot of common ground. She was more progressive than average for that community. And she really encouraged me to submit the questionnaire. So I went ahead and did. And, you know, So I went ahead and did, and you know, as, as a man I admire once said, we can disagree without being disagreeable. And I told them quite clearly, you know, look, I disagree with you on rent control. I don't think it's always bad. I think the state rent control law is good. And I was in favor of passing the urgency ordinance to implement it immediately. I think if you can't operate under that law, you are bad at being a landlord and you should sell your property to somebody who can operate it better. You know, I'm in favor of a vacancy tax to get a, you know, reduce plight of properties, but yeah, I, yeah.
Thank you. Next is Marty Medina.
I didn't try to get Sam Carr's endorsement. I, I do want to acknowledge that there are some amazing realtors in our community. I'm with some of them in the Lions and in the Rotary. But I think overall, when, when, when you see what happened when the city was trying to develop a commercial property tax by having a charter city, Sam Carr came out really, really heavy. And I found that those, those speaking on Sam Carr's behalf were, were, were really not that honest. So I, I can see that you could, you could agree to disagree. But it's also important to stick to facts. And when you don't stick to the facts, you kind of lose integrity and respect. And, and I think it was unfortunate that that was what had to happen.
Thank you. Next is Jeremy Sernicki.
I'm running my campaign with a vision for a better San Bruno. And it's been informed on my experiences and what I think is best for my neighbors. I don't have any big money backers. I don't have any endorsements of the large players. I don't have flyers, mailers, phone calls, flying blimps saying no to commercial property taxes in my city. I'm running a grassroots campaign because I care much about the issues. I feel like we need to bring a local voice. We have an existential crisis, which is climate change, and we can't rely on the state government to deal with it any longer. I think I can have a conversation with anybody. And in fact, I did not like how the city said this was a commercial property tax when it involved residential units with more than five units. But for properties valued more than fifty million dollars, I don't think anyone would be opposed to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Strazarena.
Thank you very much. I congratulate those that did get the endorsement from Sam Carr to help with their campaign financially or what have you. Real estate is kind of tricky. Sometimes it's real good, sometimes it isn't. I'm glad that Aras had a nice discussion with a real estate agent that was in his neighborhood. So Sam Carr endorsement is good, like any endorsement is good. It can provide funds for you for campaigns or flyers or what have you. But I think it's a, it's a good thing to have, and I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Sandy Alvarez.
I accepted the endorsement from Sam Carr. Sam Carr, sorry. Realtors bring in businesses to the city by selling properties and the city get, get revenue from the property tax. Sam Carr promotes affordable housing and I do support that. That's why I accepted their endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Should city council members have an obligation to keep the city in alignment with state law, even if you disagree with it? Should city council members have an obligation to keep the city in alignment with state law, even if you disagree with it? And first is Marty Medina.
Sure. The city council relies on primarily the advice of our city attorney when it comes down to legal matters. When we are provided that information, it is in our best interest and the city's best interest to, to comply with the law. So I would say that the answer is yes, that, that we should comply with state law at all times, whenever possible. So I, I think what, what this is kind of leading up to a little bit is what happens if a council member doesn't comply? And, and that's a whole nother legal matter. For the ease of the answer, it, it, it is always best to, to comply with the state law.
Thank you. Next is Jeffrey Tong.
I agree with Marty Medina that it is always best to comply with state law. Having said that, if I were to disagree with it, I would believe it would be necessary to change the legal structure and the the venue, I believe, is the city charter. We would need to pass a city charter in order to have any hope of changing anything that that deviates from state law. And, and again, I believe that we need to confer with the city attorney or the city legal consultants to see how we can change those things. And many things such as environmental laws, the lower level of government can in fact have more stringent requirements than the state or the federal.
Thank you. And next is John Strazarena.
Thank you very much. This seems to be a very simplistic question about do we follow state law, yes or no? Bottom line is, yes, we have to follow state law. I agree with what Marty said about having the city attorney provide his input. We all stop at a stop sign. We all stop at a red light. Whatever rules that the state has, we follow. Bottom line, there's not really much room for discussion. Certainly, we can disagree with it, but ultimately we have to follow the laws. End of story. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sandy Alvarez.
Yes, I believe that the local government should be, should, should be obligated to follow the state law. However, we also have the opportunity to create a more restrictive municipal code. But that being said, as a council member, I will promote working, working with, working with the staff to promote reach code, anything that will support climate action plan, support the, you know, how our environment to be better. We already have the state law heading forward to zero emission and we are already following that. And so without having, you know, any, any plan or policy in plan, if we don't already have, we are already contributing to following whatever the, the, the laws of that the state is mandating. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Aras Harmon.
So just, I really quickly want to note that I have received no financial support from Sam Carr or any other private organization since the idea of financial support was mentioned earlier. You can go on my website, I've restricted donations. Look, in 2019, my opponent, Mr. Medina, ignoring the advice of the city attorney, cast a vote against the Mills Park project. You can read about this in numerous news accounts. There's one that was the SF Chronicles in-depth report, San Bruno seeks housing then rejects it. I believe the subhead was, I don't know what you can get past. This made us liable under the Housing Accountability Act of nineteen eighty-two. The California Renters Legal Foundation, Carla, Legal Assistance and Education Foundation prepared a suit, which was then told, there was, they filed a tolling agreement. This took up staff time, both the city attorney dealing with negotiations and private meetings. And, you know, while we did ultimately approve it, it was derailed by COVID. And I think is maybe a fifty fifty chance that we get that project. And the other alternative is that we get an SB thirty-five project that's a seven story featureless concrete tower.
Thank you. And next is Jeremy Sernicki.
Yeah, so if the, if the question is, should we follow state law? The answer is yes. Every time it's yes, the law is the law. This was relevant when the city was forced with litigation over transitioning to district elections. I believe I was the only candidate for District One that took an active process, role in this process, making sure that Rollingwood was not divvied up. If someone could correct me. In terms of housing, I think the residents spoke loud and clear when they voted to remove some of the restrictions for housing permits and building codes. State law is going to rule in terms of housing and it is already making its voice heard. If we would like to change state law, that's up to us, electing the right state representatives.
Thank you. We have time for two more questions. And one's just back to the nitty gritty of the city. One resident wrote in to express disappointment in the recycling efforts in San Bruno. What is the status of recycling? Is it getting done effectively? Is there public education about it? Is it working? So we're talking about recycling in San Bruno. This particular resident is disappointed in San Bruno's efforts. What's the status of it and is it effective? And can we educate the public more about it? And we'll start with John Strazarena.
Thank you very much. As you know, as San Bruno residents, we have the yard waste, we have the gray and we have the recycle. I believe that's working well. There probably could be some additional enhancements in terms of how the recology people work and how recycling works. A while back, we received a, a small container that was for kitchen scraps, banana peels, apple core and so forth. But I can't say I see that there was any great acceptance of that. So perhaps what we should do is readdress that issue to see if we can get some of the recycling done on the, you know, kitchen waste issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeremy Sernicki.
So I believe there are two candidates running in my district that bill themselves as environmentalists. That's myself and Jeffrey Tong. And I would just like to say for the record that in twenty twenty-two, I wanted to make a point that I am not shying away from the fact we are living with an existential crisis on our hands. And I am not ignoring this whatsoever. And I see a lot of focus on the size of trash bins and recycling efforts. A lot of staff time was spent on this, in fact. I would like us to think bigger because we have a lot bigger problems on our hands. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Jeffrey Tong.
I believe in the environmentalist mantra in that we should reuse, we should reduce before we reuse. And we should do that before we recycle. Organic waste should not be recycled, it should be composted. And there had been no public, virtually no public education by recology. One council member asked that question to investigate and four other council members did not second her. So whether there was no debate in our recology contract is about twenty years, which is over one generation time. I believe city council should have spent more time on this trash issue than even the cannabis issue. One of the things that the consultant mentioned was they met their basic criteria, but he didn't mention the qualitative.
Thank you. Next is Marty Medina.
Yeah, I, I think it's more of, of what we've heard from recology in that it isn't as, it's now a cost to recycle and to pick up, pick up items. It used to be that recology, we collect them and the city would get a credit. But the recycling demand, the, the demand for recycled goods, specifically in China, has, has drastically been reduced and more stringent on making sure that the recyclables themselves are, are cleaner. What we do need to look at is, as a society, is, is to avoid those things that are being recycled. So if instead of buying a water bottle, what you do is you, you get a reusable water bottle and, and we, we try to do that at our house as much as possible. Try to look at the packaging that, that your products come in and, and minimizing the amount of waste that, that comes with these certain products.
Thank you. And next is Sandy Alvarez.
Thank you for that question. I think it's a great question. I don't have all the, the information on, on the updates. But in my opinion, I think we need to educate the residents. I, I, I research recycling compost and there's a lot to learn about composting. So I think if elected, I probably would create a committee about that because it's a very important issue. The, the rates are going up, even, even the water rates. I think we need to educate the residents on how to properly use their, the water and also how to reuse the water. So that's part of recycling. So in my opinion, education, education, educating the, the residents is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Aras Harmon.
Yeah, I think unfortunately with the collapse of the, the finances of recycling, because you can no longer sell the materials. You know, I mean, I grew up with recycling when we still had to sort them. And I, I wish it worked, but I think we've seen that people just, you know, don't actually do it. The, the way that you solve an environmental problem is to make the easy, thoughtless choice into one that is environmentally friendly. And, you know, with the weird requirements we have, like you can't recycle black plastic officially under our recology contract apparently, which I honestly don't even know why. So you're supposed to throw your black plastic in the trash and the other plastic in the recycling. I don't think it's a highly successful model. I mean, I would love to explore with recology ways to improve it. I do think the composting is on the right track and potentially with education could be significantly improved. When I lived in San Mateo, there was more public education on the topic and, and opportunities to return high quality mulch for your garden. And so I would definitely double down on that.
Thank you. Thank you. And finally, you all have different skills and different experiences that you will bring to this job. My question is, what is your unique skill that you will bring to this job? And how will you apply it to your work on the San Bruno City Council? Or as I like to put it, what is your superpower? And what will, how will you use it to help the city of San Bruno and do your job on the city council? And first is Jeremy Sernicki.
Well, I'm a scientist, I'm a microbiologist and I'm a scientist by training and by profession. I like to research an issue as much as possible, form an objective opinion, conclusion that sees it from both sides. And this is true for every issue I come across. So this can be the transfer tax where I saw that it is something I think ninety-five percent of our residents would approve of. But I don't like making such a fundamental change to our city, transitioning to a charter city where we are not perfectly clear that this is a commercial tax that's also taxing residential properties. This is also true for a variety of issues. So anytime I want to look at an issue, I'm going to see it from multiple sides.
Thank you. And next is Sandy Alvarez.
If I were to say my powers, I, I probably would be a hands-on person. I, I am a very hardworking person. I gather facts, I do research, I don't just do the talk. I walk the talk. And so, you know, I like to work with people. I'm very friendly and approachable, so I think that would be my superpowers that I can attribute to and to, to my, my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Aras Harmon.
So I have a very eccentric and eclectic career path. I, I recommend as a life goal, cultivate a hobby that you can turn into a new job. I have worked in statistical language modeling. I then got a master's in sustainable business focused on finance and did financial data modeling. And, and then from there, I taught myself network engineering and, and used my network engineering and software knowledge to get my job, current job at Tesla, where I'm the, the senior support engineer for industrial batteries. I keep your grid online. My superpower is systems thinking. I look at complicated systems and look for the leverage points in them, the way there are feedback loops, the, the way that different variables, you know, accelerate and decelerate the entire system. And I have a particular talent for that kind of abstract thinking. And I, you know, have in the last five, six years, since I got really interested in housing, have been focusing on get, gaining, you know, a high quality layman's understanding. I'm not a lawyer, but I keep track of the state of play on what the state laws are around housing, what's required of us, of us as a city. And we'll help make the housing affordable.
Thank you. And next is John. Thank you. And uh, next is John Strazarrino.
Thank you very much. I wish my superpower were flying, but obviously it isn't. I'm the oldest member of who, oldest person on this call. I'm retired. I have time to investigate the issues. I have time to look at the different procedures. I have time to visit places. I have time to do many things. So my superpower would be time, pure and simple. Virtually everyone else has a job forty hours a week, uh, you know, five, forty hours a week. Uh, fifty-two weeks a year or fifty weeks a year. So I have the time to devote to do whatever is necessary. Now, again, I'm running a district one, but my goal is to be. I guess this could be a superpower is to help everyone in San Bruno, not just those in district one. To be able to look at the issues, to research the issues, to ask pertinent questions, to see where the money's going and so forth. So my superpower is I have the time to do this job and to do this job well. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Marty Medina.
Yeah, I, I would think first of the. The real skill in being um experienced with public works and construction management skills. And then strained from that is. Really having compassion and empathy for people. That you, you have to seek what people are experiencing. Think about it if it was happening to you. And see what you can do about it. Um, I, I question always, why are we doing things this way? What, how could this be done differently? Um, so, what, when, when you're out in the community and you're accessible to people, you get, you have that opportunity to hear from people. And you may have not have thought of, of, of the problem in that certain way. So. I think that's a really important skill to have as a council member and I, I have it.
Thank you. And finally, Jeffrey Tong.
I think um balance between everybody here. I'm, when I joined the bike committee in twenty twelve, I sold my car. And I became a bicyclist full-time and this has been for ten years already. And in that sense, I've been walking and biking the neighborhood and listening to everyone. My background is an environmental planner, appraiser, uh, mortgage broker and construction management. I blend all of that into critical analysis. So even though I may have educational training. I listen to people and see how things work. I helped build the San Bruno cycle track between Bart and Caltrain because I saw that as the critical pathway. And uh, and I would say learning to be a sus- Learning sustainability uh development is one of my strongest points. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, candidates, for answering all those questions. Uh, we'll move on to closing statements and. Uh, give you a second to gather your thoughts. I'm just going to mention briefly that all the candidates have been. Invited to enter their information and link to their own websites on the League's Voters Edge. Um, website, which is votersedge.org. Uh, so now it's time for closing statements and our first one is Marty Medina.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. Thank you to all the candidates and their families. This is a lot of work. And thank you to the residents for participating in this very important process. If your question wasn't asked or if you need clarification, clarification, please call me. At six five zero five eight zero three four four five. We have made tremendous progress working together to increase our city's revenues, but there is still more to do. Despite the effects of a pandemic, we are on the right path. In District Four, new water and sewer mains continue to be installed and more streets are being repaved. San Bruno has a massive amount of development in the planning stages right now with more to come. The council will soon receive YouTube's payment of, of over fifty million dollars. This payment is a result of our council's decision to implement development impact fees and negotiate community benefits. The ca- the council's next step is to decide where these funds should go. I have the experience to make the right choices for District Four and all of San Bruno. I have listened to your concerns and frustrations regarding street safety, parking. And parking during my weeks of campaigning. I will lead the effort to improve these issues by installing speed bumps, improving line of sight at intersections. Lighting up dark streets and streamlining, streamlining the residential parking permit program. Three years ago, I asked San Bruno voters for the opportunity to continue to improve our city. I have. I bring an unmatched record of dedicated community service and experience to the city council. I humbly ask for your vote in District Four. So I could continue to be the accessible and responsive council member that listens and acts on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Sandy Alvarez.
Again, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and for everyone who tuned in. What sets me apart from my opponents is I have a proven ability to collaborate with our city staff. To determine the best solutions. I will listen, learn and determine the appropriate actions. For the best interest of our community. I am committed to advocating economic growth and its sustainability. I stand behind my constituents as a strong voice to bring their concerns to the table. Last, I'd like to close my statement by saying I am excited for this opportunity. To serve in a capacity where I can have an impact in making our city financially strong. Therefore, I humbly ask for your vote on November eighth. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next is Jeffrey Tong.
San Bruno is built out. And there's not much room for development every twenty or thirty years. But in that time, there has been since World War Two, a growth pyramid scam. We cannot depend upon uh growth all the time. Uh, building community is extremely difficult in District One, but it's imperative, e- especially when. Uh, it's the, the prices of homes are so expensive, people need to pay their mortgages. San Bruno's at a crossroad. Our streets are broken, our uh. Being trashed and uh crime is on the rise and is putting stresses on our city. Our city must morph or die, but crisis. Brings opportunity and we need a sustainable vision, a green economy which honors ecology. And rebuilds community. History is the essential seed to, to uh. Chart into the future and we must rekindle our pre-automobile, pre-gambling roots of the last century. I believe I have the vision and the experience and humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Jeremy Sernicki.
I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum as well as all the viewers. My name is Jeremy Sernicki and I am running on a campaign to make the enormous changes. Taking place our cro- taking place across our beloved city. Serve the entire community. I would like to bring a special focus to. District One and giving it the full attention it deserves. We have a grand amount of changes coming to our city, uh, nothing that can compare to what each one of us has had to deal with in our private lives over these. Past two years. Uh, with the planned developments coming to the former Crestmore High School and the San Bruno Golf Center, the expansion of YouTube into a massive corporate campus. It is our collective duty to preserve what makes San Bruno truly the city with the heart. In twenty twenty, I ran on a campaign that consisted of the following top three priorities. Protect, protecting public schools, preserving public lands. Building adequate housing and bringing local solutions to global issues. In twenty twenty-two, I believe I am ready to take on the community's concerns as my own and make good on these promises. I think that we need to ask more of city council. That is to expand our expectations, that they focus on these larger issues which. These six systemic risks which have the ability to upend everything that's been accomplished over these last two years. And that is not to say that we lose focus on the central duty of city council. Which is to provide a vision for the future growth and development to our city manager, which I believe. He has done a fantastic job leading our city through this uh, this crisis. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next is Aras Harmon. Yep, you're on mute. You're on mute, Aras. We'll start you over.
I also uh want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting. Thank my fellow candidates uh for participating and in the process and in the, in the forum. I want to thank the seven hundred-ish uh citizens of the district that I have met at their front doors. Um, there are two thousand four hundred thirty-eight households in District Four, at least of, of registered voters. At least according to the data file that I got. I knocked on every door I could reach. I phoned everyone who was behind a gate I couldn't pass. Um, and uh, if you would like to talk to me, you can email me at sanbruno@aros.org. S A N B R U N O at A U R O S dot O R G. Or you can call me five one oh six eight one four three seven seven. I am happy to discuss the issues in greater depth. You can also read more on my website, aros.org. I do not accept the idea that anyone who works a full-time job should not be able to thrive in San Bruno. Uh, I think that all of us should be able to live and work here together, send, you know, our kids, if we have them to the same schools. You know, um. We could make better decisions. Zoning and planning. And building codes are not written on stone tablets from Mount Sinai. They are choices that we make collectively and we can make better choices. That will result in, you know, an adequate supply of affordable housing. So a person on the median income can afford the median home. I have just seen too many of my friends leave. Um, I, I, I get emotional about uh the cost of housing. I also want to thank my uh, my spouse for having been patient with me these last few weeks as I've been incredibly focused on my uh, my campaign. I love you Plymouth. Um, and my uh, my family, uh, one of my uh. Younger brothers, my younger brother died a few months ago. Um, and so my, my parents have been going through a lot and his daughter uh will probably be uh. My responsibility. And so in terms of bringing everyone's kids to the same schools, that's going to be an interesting experience.
Thank you. And next is, finally, is John Strazarrino.
Thank you very much. I would also like to thank everyone for listening to all these different discussions. Lot of information was provided and I think you need to think whose comments were most in align with what your thoughts are. And vote for him or her in the upcoming election. Please vote. We, you know, voting is one of the uh responsibilities of being a US citizen. So vote, please vote. You know, times are changing. COVID is kind of diminishing. People are going outside. We've got the rec center moving along. We've got. Skyline, we're talking about cannabis, no matter which side of it you're on. So the city is coming along. We're starting to do things. It's going to be slow. Things won't happen overnight. You won't see Melody Toyota. Disappearing tomorrow in a ten-story building showing up the next day. Takes a long time. You've got to work with the developers. So. If you like what I've had to say, please uh contact me. My website is johnstrazarrino.com. Uh, you can see the spelling uh on the thing. And um, I look forward to your vote and give me a call. Contact me. Several people have. Expressing their opinions. So thank you very much. And of course, thanks to Margie and to Kathy for. Volunteering, if that's the word, for the League of Women Voters uh seminar. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we are volunteers. Um, but I love candidate forums, so I will do one any day. Um, couple, um, couple words about voting. Uh, remember to vote on or by. Kathy, can you share our slides, please? We just have a couple of things to talk about. Um, remember to vote on or by November eighth and encourage others to vote as well. Um, you can just throw it right back in the mail in its postage paid envelope. You can use a Dropbox. You can visit a vote center. I did look, you have a um. One vote center is open nearby in South San Francisco right now. It's at the main library. It's open. Uh, Monday through Friday until October twenty-ninth and then it's seven days a week. Then you'll have a four-day vote center opening on November fifth through eighth in San Bruno. Um, at the Bethany Presbyterian Church and the courtyard by Marriott. You can go there if you mar your ballot or just like to vote in person. Or have any questions, uh, the super helpful people from the elections office will be there. Or you can use a Dropbox. Uh, all the vote centers will have a Dropbox, but you have a couple extra in San Bruno at City Hall and at the Senior Center. Um, and whatever you do, don't forget to sign your ballot envelope. That is the one reason ballots get. Rejected. You'll have a chance to cure it, but make it easy on the elections office and be sure to sign the ballot. Uh, next, yes, you will, to help you uh make decisions, you'll have your sample ballot. You'll have the state's official voter information guide. Uh, the league has the Easy Voter Guide. It's online at easivoterguide.org and there's also the Voters Edge. Um, and that we talked about earlier, votersedge.org. Um, and last but not least, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization and membership is open to people of all genders. Ages sixteen and up. Uh, join us. If you're interested in helping your communities forums such as this or other. Activities in which you help educate voters, we'd uh love to have your support. And we can end the slide share. And finally, and most importantly, it is a brave, hard and sometimes thankless job to run for office. And I would like everybody to thank the candidates for doing so. Uh, we appreciate you and thank you for running for the San Bruno City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you as well. Yes.
And good night.
Thank you.
And everyone.
Care everyone. Good luck to everyone.